Good evening. Welcome to the Titusville City Council Meeting on May 12, 2020 at 5:30 PM. I'm going to do this a little bit out of order because it's not on there in order, so please join me in the pledge to flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, please join me in a moment of silence. Clerk, please read the procedures for speaking.
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Comments made under public comment must relate directly to the agenda items. No sign-up card is required. Sign-up cards are located on the table downstairs in the lobby. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items.
Thank you, Clerk. We have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. You have first order?
Would you like me to read the additional procedures?
Yes. I didn't get to that yet, but yes.
In order to help prevent the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus and to comply with all local, state, and federal laws and guidelines regarding social distancing and social gatherings, designated seating shall be provided for the public within City Hall. Individual speaker shall, when directed to do so, be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at City Hall during the meeting in accordance with City of Titusville Resolution Number 162020. Signs held by speakers are permissible, but no tripods, easel, props, or other demonstrative aids shall be brought into City Hall. In addition to the regular broadcast of the council meeting via closed-circuit television and livestream YouTube video, which may be accessed through the city's website, video and audio of the meeting will also be provided within City Hall for the public in attendance. As an additional method for public participation, the public may submit written comments via email to city.agenda@Titusville.com or by regular mail to City Council's attention at City Hall 555 South Washington Avenue, Titusville, Florida 32796. Written comments must be received by 5:00 PM prior to the start of the meeting and include the senator's name, address, and the subject line must specify the agenda item being addressed. All comments will be disseminated to the council members and made a part of the public record prior to any action being taken. Speakers who appear in person will be subject to screening for symptoms of COVID-19, and any persons exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 will not be permitted to enter City Hall.
Thank you, sir. You had something to-
Yes, Mayor and Council, before we get to the agenda, staff is expected to receive a demolition permit for the building located at 346 South Washington Avenue, and that's at the corner of Julius Street and South Washington Avenue in the near future. Council directed that we cancel all advisory boards. This structure is in the historic district. In order for the demolition to be done, it has to go up here before the Historic Preservation Board. So staff would like permission to, when we get the, all the information that we need, to go ahead and have a Historic Preservation Board meeting, and we'll figure out how to do it, but we'd like permission to do that.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I approve that we approve a Historic Preservation Board meeting. Not appropriate.
Second. I have a mo- I have a motion in two seconds. I believe the Vice Mayor was first. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed, like, sign? Passes unanimously. First item, sir.
First item is a resolution of emergency procedures for permitting. On April 29, 2020, the Governor issued Executive Order 2112, adopting recommendations in Phase 1 of the plan published by the task force to reopen Florida. Section 3B of the Executive Order provides for outdoor seating at restaurants and food establishments for the consumption of food and beverage on premise. And on April 28, 2020, City Council directed staff to move forward with fee waivers for certain activities related to small, established businesses and to allow outdoor seating at restaurants. The attached resolution confirms the action of council and establishes criteria for outdoor seating. The criteria that's listed, there are five criteria there. We do have staff available to answer any questions. One of the items we would like to clarify is a definition of a small business.
Okay. Counsel?
We don't have to discuss?
Do we have, I don't know-
Well, you can make a motion. We can discuss, or we can discuss before, whichever you'd like.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 182020.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sec.
I have a motion, it's a second, and a second discussion. Who would like to go?
The only question I would have, Mayor, is, do we have a definition for small business as of yet?
We don't have one in the code. Now, the, when the county adopted theirs, they adopted the same definition that the federal government has adopted, which is less than 500 employees. So that is one option, and what we just wanted, we just want to make sure that we know your intent.
In the adoption of a small business of less than 500 employees, that would just about hit every one of our businesses to cover that. Yep.
Okay, so with the inclusion, we can conclude that?
Do we have any cards, Clerk?
Yes. I was getting there. That's all right. I appreciate it. Do we have any cards? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any other further discussion? See none?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I think we need a clarification for the small business, and I would assume that we would go along with the Small Business Administration, which is 500 employees or less.
And my second-
Make an amendment?
Yes, I'll make an amendment to my motion.
My second would hold.
The second holds, okay. Now, this is a resolution, so we should-
So could I just clarify, I want to make sure that we're going to do this right.
Okay.
We are going to say that if you are asking for a permit for work less than $25,000 and you have fewer than 500 people, these waivers would apply. Is that correct?
Was that your motion?
Thank you.
And second understood, Doc?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, roll, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel? Member Stokel?
I'm not hearing anything, but I say yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Item for the settlement of the sewer main damage claim. During repairs to the City of Titusville sewer main and sinking manhole at the intersection of South Washington Avenue and Navara's Drive, it was discovered on August 9, 2018, that a contractor had directional bored through the City of Titusville sanitary main in two locations, which caused the manhole to sink. The city has been attempting to recover the total loss of repairs in the amount of approximately $315,000 from the responsible contractor. The city has now received a final offer for the settlement of these repairs in the amount of $290,000, where you're seeking council's approval to settle this claim contingent upon payment being received within 30 days.
First thing I want to do is to make a statement and tell the city attorney how much, how impressed I am on the settlement that you got on this. It's unusual to, for two opposing people on these sort of things, or businesses, or whoever, to come that close together to the higher part. So I'm amazed, frankly. That was very well done.
Thank you. If I could comment on that, a lot of credit's going to go to your staff, who did the investigation at the initial finding of the damage and the photographs and the package they were able to put together to show liability clearly. So I'd like to give them the credit for doing it.
Absolutely, and I, everybody that was involved did a very, very good job, so thank you. Any, yes, Member Jordan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve settlement of sewer main damage claim.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Do we have a card on this item?
Thank you.
No, sir.
I would just ask Mr. Bloom to explain why this is a good deal only for the citizens. I agree it is a good deal, but the citizens may not understand why we are settling for less than the full amount of the claim.
The number you see in the report of 315 included some staff time. We contracted out for approximately $299,000, which was actual, you know, the out-of-pocket that you had the contractor to do the repairs. Also, there was some question about the amount of damages and them wanting to clarify some of the damages. So the fact we were able to get to 290 without expending additional resources, I think, is important. One of the primary reasons I believe this is, was a great settlement, is we did not have to initiate litigation. Filing fees, I would have estimated this to be months of litigation, depositions, staff time, attorney's fees, and expense, which would have well exceeded the $9,000 difference between the 299 and the 290. So in my opinion, this was a good settlement for the city. Yes, ma'am.
I would agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a card on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item? Oh, did, yo.
We have a motion, just not a vote.
Did you have a second?
We need a vote.
Okay, we had the motion, the second. All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
In our last item, prior to public comment, this city council will discuss the consent agenda procedures for public comments for any potential modifications that you should like us to construct for the conduct of your meetings.
I'm going to take the lead on this, if you don't mind, Counsel. I'm sure we all went over all of the different things that are being done in other cities that were, a list that was given to us. The one I found was the one I think you made the suggestion on at the last meeting, that if somebody comes up and if they have one, two, or three, they get three minutes for each item. If they go to four, then they get 10 minutes, and that's it. They can talk on whatever items they want to during that 10 minutes, but they have to, A, follow our procedures, which is relevancy, and, B, they will get only 10 minutes. That seems to me the clearest one of the various ones that were put down there, because there's no discussion, there's no argument, there's no further, anything more to get involved in other than, okay, you got 10 minutes. So that's, that's the one I'm in favor of. Vice Mayor?
Well, I would simply agree with what you said there, and as was perhaps brought up the last meeting. Of the examples that we have given to us, and I think the one that most looks like that is Broward County. And I think that may be exactly what we're looking at here, but I, I just think there has to be some semblance of a finite time allowed. And I'm not sure we have that sometimes. So I think that the Broward County and what you have just said gives every person an opportunity to speak, and a reasonable amount of time is 10 minutes if they've got more than a couple. So I like that, and again, as I looked them over, I thought Broward County stood out, and I think that's what you were kind of saying there, too.
Absolutely.
Oh, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to add a little bit to it. I would love to see us have a definition for consent agenda in there, so we know specifically what items go under consent agenda. I think we pretty much stick to it, but every now and then something goes in there and sort of scratch my head and wonder why it's in there.
Okay.
Second thing is-
Can we just stop on that one for a moment? I just want to run past the city attorney. Does that, does that present any problems for us legally or any other way, really?
No, I think it is important to distinguish, distinguish between a consent agenda and the rest of your agenda, such as public hearing items and quasi-judicial. Consent agenda items are typically routine in nature, non-controversial, and don't deviate from your established policies. In other words, they don't generate a lot of discussion. That is the kind of item that is typically on a consent agenda. And that's, and those are distinguished from discussion-type items. I would agree, we can certainly qualify that. That is your expectation when you're establishing this time period associated with consent agenda, is your expectation that those are the type of items that will be on a consent agenda. I would also-
Go ahead.
I would also suggest, and to your point, if there are items on the consent agenda which you believe merit further discussion, or if a citizen advises you they would like an item pulled for further discussion for your consideration, and you decide this is an item that may not be as routine, it may merit discussion. At that point, you could certainly vote and remove that from the consent and provide speakers an opportunity to speak on that item separately.
But we have the choice whether to do that or not. Is that correct?
Yes, Counsel, you, we could have, in your policies and procedures, that you could decide to pull an item from consent as a counsel, or an individual council member could say, I would like this item pulled from consent for further discussion. Then we would pull it off consent, and then I would suggest that speakers would be able to have a separate time to speak, because you have decided that's worthy of discussion.
Okay, but it's not mandatory, I want to make sure we got it, it's not mandatory that we pull that item if someone asks for it to be pulled?
It's up to counsel to set that policy, but you could, the policy could be, that would be counsel's discretion.
Okay, and, you know, forgive me, I don't question your knowledge on this and so forth, but I want to make sure that everybody hears it and that we don't miss some sort of thing. Just, this one I want to get right, right, right.
I agree.
Next, please.
I would also like us to consider allowing people to go ahead and continue with the email comments if they would wish to do so. I think that's, for people that are shut in, that's a perfect way for them to be able to have some input.
And as we've been doing, they have to be in by a certain time?
Correct.
And... City Attorney, any comments on that, or?
No, sir, I agree. We can certainly incorporate the ability to provide written comments, as you're doing now, up to maybe 5 o'clock before the meeting, and disseminate it to council for your consideration.
Up to 5 o'clock, that's, that's good.
The third thing, sorry, I made a list. Third thing is, I would like to have the policy made clear that the relevance of a discussion is left to the mayor or a majority of council. It is not up to the individual speaking. Relevance should be determined by you.
I have that one.
Oh, you have that one, too?
I had a short list, but that's on me.
So I would like to consider putting that in there, along with, if you're, if the speaker is relevant, the first time, it's a warning. Second time, sit down. If they make threats against persons or property, they are escorted out.
Is that consistent with-
Yeah, my understanding of the reason counsel feels is appropriate is because you want to conduct efficient, effective, and timely meetings to do your business.
Absolutely.
Correct.
And in creating these policies and procedures and recognizing the reasonable opportunity of the public to comment on these propositions, we could also include the decorum, I'll refer to as decorum language, that to maintain decorum in your proceedings, that speakers be relevant, that they not be impertinent, slanderous, making those types of remarks, being boisterous or disruptive, and, and your authority as running the meeting to make sure that that doesn't happen and ask them to sit down. Yes, we can have some decorum procedures associated with this.
Yeah, absolutely, and of course, that's the reason that we, I in particular, being the chairman of the, of the meeting, am responsible to keep it in order, and it's become increasingly difficult to do that, as everybody saw at the last meeting. So I'm totally content that we're going in the right direction. Any other?
I think that was it. I think I reached the end of my list.
Thank you, thank you for your input. Member Jordan, you have a light on?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure you, you kind of explain what I said at the last meeting. I just want to read what I said at the last meeting, so we'll have a clarity on what we're going to go forward with, if that's okay with you. I mean, it doesn't go against what you say, it just clarifies exactly what I said.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, and I would hope it's the same thing that we read in here.
Yes, it is. No, I'm not going to do that. I, what I wrote and read last week was, if the speaker has signed for one item under the consent agenda, he or she will be allotted three minutes. If more than one, the speaker will remain in chamber and speak on each item for no more than two minutes each per item, and no more than 10 minutes for all items.
That's consistent with what we're looking at here, City Attorney? That's consistent with what, what was presented by the Vice-
Yes, sir, it's a scaled approach.
Yeah, the 10-minute thing.
Yes, sir, I heard three minutes for up to three items and 10 minutes total beyond three items, and then I've heard three minutes for one item, two minutes for subsequent items, not to exceed 10 minutes in total. So is that what I, I've heard that?
No, let me, it's fine, the, the major point is maximum of 10 minutes for all items.
As, I understood it was three minutes, three minutes, three minutes, then 10 minutes if it's a fourth item. Is that not the way it was presented?
Three minutes, three minutes, three minutes. However, if you were, I want to talk on additional four, five, four items, then your total for all four was 10 minutes total.
I heard a scalable two, didn't you?
Yeah, I did. Basically, let me, let me read it one more time. If a speaker has signed for one item under the consent agenda, he or she will be allotted three minutes, one item. If more than one, the speaker will remain in chamber and speak on each item for no more than two minutes each item, and no more than 10 minutes for all items. So the first item is three minutes, second item, and subsequent, they can speak for two minutes, up to 10 minutes for the total number of items. But he's, they're not going to get, if they got two items, that's a total of five minutes, right? If they've got three items, they've done three for one, now they got four minutes for two of them, right? That's seven, right? And then they sit down. They don't get a total of 10 just because they got more than two, okay?
That's not what I understood it was, so we need to discuss that. Who, who?
I can live with that.
All we're saying is first item, three minutes, all subsequent items, two minutes each, up to 10 minutes.
And what I was doing was 3, 3, 3, that the max, you could talk, no matter how many cards you had in, the max you could talk for 10. So we're, we're basically at the same spot.
And the maximum number of consent agenda items one can speak on is?
It is spoken.
But they can take up to 10 minutes and speak on all they want?
Exactly.
But they, they don't get to just stand there for 10 minutes?
No.
Okay, now, the way you just explained that was three minutes, two minutes after that?
Right.
And then two minutes and two minutes, which I believe would be, come up to what?
Nine minutes.
Nine?
Nine minutes, right.
Okay, so-
If they got four items, then that's three plus two, that's seven, right? Seven minutes, right? If they got four, they only speak for seven minutes. They don't get 10 minutes for the whole-
Okay, so we've cut it from 10 to 7?
No, no, no. What we're trying to do is, if you come up, if a citizen come up and they want to speak on one item, they get three minutes and they sit down. If a citizen come up and say, I got five items that I want to speak, speak on. You got three minutes on the first one, right? So the other four is two minutes, right? That's eight. That's too many minutes. So we're telling them that you may have five items, but the maximum you're going to have is 10 minutes. No matter how many, if we got 12 items in there, the maximum is going to be 10 minutes.
Okay.
The four items-
It's, we're saying the same thing in a different way, though. I think it's clearer if you say, you get three minutes for the first one, three minutes for the second one, three minutes for the third one. Anything above that, you get a total of 10 minutes for all of it.
Yes, yeah, you can do it that way. I, I don't have a problem with that.
I, I think that's the way, well, the way I understood and the way it was said, defer to you.
That, that was the original statement. I can provide, I can, if that's your wishes, I can prepare it that way. We'll have first reading. It can always be modified if council decides to modify it further, but whatever your wishes tonight, we'll do a three minutes, three minutes, three minutes.
Well, I like them both, but I kind of agree with you, Mayor, that that, the first one simplifies it. But I think the main thing is, I, my feeling is, and I feel like you guys are saying, we don't want anyone, anyone to come in and dominate a meeting for an hour and a half.
Correct.
10 minutes, and not only for that reason, but for the people who are sitting out there or down there, wherever they may be, because they deserve an equal opportunity, and they shouldn't have to sit there for an hour and a half before they get their shot.
Right.
I think we're just trying to be fair and equitable to everyone.
And I think I heard you said, you say that you didn't mind it being 3, 3, 3, and 1.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not a problem. Total 10, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I'm a problem, total 10, yeah.
Anyone else have a problem with that?
Right, just to clarify.
Member Stokel, are you there?
Yeah, I was just placing my card.
Okay. Go ahead and speak.
Yep, no, I, I think that's a good compromise, the Broward County, what you guys are talking about, and just for the sake of it just being a little easier, I think we'll still be able to accomplish what we're hoping to accomplish with making sure citizens have reasonable amount of time to talk while still running an efficient and effective meeting with, with making sure they just have three minutes per item, and then capping it off at 10 minutes if they do have multiple items. I think it's just easier that way.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just ask a question? As an example, we had 27 agenda, consent agenda items at our last meeting. So, if a citizen were to pull 27 items, he would get 10 minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
That's it.
Anything, anything over three, he gets 10 minutes automatically, over.
That is cleaner.
Sir?
Just want to clarify, so they will do a card, so before they speak, you will understand at that point how many items they have. So, when they come to the podium, if they've marked more than three items, then you will tell the speaker they have 10 minutes to discuss consent agenda.
Correct.
And then they will discuss whatever items they would like to approach, discuss under the consent agenda for 10 minutes.
Yes.
Okay, are there any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Mayor, just so I can get an idea what that looks like, are we saying that someone can speak three minutes and then they have to sit down?
I'm sorry.
They have to speak three minutes and then they have to sit down? We're not, we're going to give them a 10-minute roll?
No, we can go consecutively. Somebody has three items, as we've, actually, as we've done to this point, they can, I can make a judgment, okay, you get your three minutes for each item, but if they go over those three items, I mean, with the cards, then they got 10 minutes and they do it all at once. Or they do it all at once in either case?
Because we were saying, you got three minutes, and then you got the next item, three minutes, and the next item, three minutes. What I really am hoping to stray away from are dissertations, whether it be 10 minutes or 45 minutes, but I get what you're saying, because I don't know how to make that work either.
But if we, if, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
If we are able to do it consecutively, then we don't have to worry about them going down and coming back up, and taking time up and so forth, so that's what we have done.
How do we know if they have strayed away from the consent agenda item? If they're lumping them together?
That's relevancy, and that's a whole nother issue, though.
That's why I put in, that's why I asked for the definition or the clarification, that the mayor or council decides what's relevant, not the speaker.
Well, and let's just say 22 items. Click them all off, and then you've got 10 minutes, and you're all over the place, and we're not sure which one you're talking about.
No, no, we, we call the card for that item, we call the card, I mean, we look at the cards, and if it's three of them, then they get nine, nine minutes, three minutes on one, three minutes on the other, three minutes on the third. If they have a fourth item, we tell them, if you're doing that, you have 10 minutes on whatever items you want, go right ahead. But, but then we do tell the items, you know, on the card, we say, this is the first item. If they want to take two minutes on that, they can. If they want to take one minute.
That's right, I'm thinking maybe the, if the three minutes runs out, okay, your next item. And then the three minutes runs out, and then your next item.
That's my intention.
Okay.
That will apply if there's three or less items. If a speaker, under your discussion, has on their card identified, say, 10 items, and they want to speak on 10 consent agenda items, they will identify on the card which items they want to speak to, you know they're going to have 10 minutes, because that's more than the three items. With regard to relevancy, you have a consent agenda in front of you. If you believe the conversation is not relative to any of the consent agenda items, at that point, I would suggest you ask the speaker, that does not appear to be relevant to the consent agenda, which item are you speaking on at this time? And he ought to be able, or she ought to be able to identify which item they're speaking to for relevancy. If not, you would, you could certainly tell them, that is not relevant to our consent agenda, please be relevant to an item on our consent agenda. And they could certainly identify, or should be able to identify which agenda item they're speaking to.
Member Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have two comments. The first one is, and I think going to Deputy Mayor Diesel's point, if there are two people who want to speak on consent agenda item one, do we allow that person who's got five items to speak on all of his items, or do we allow him to speak, or her to speak on the first item, and then call up the second person who's going to speak on that item also? Or are we going to just let them speak on all items for 10 minutes?
I would suggest to have one speaker speak cumulatively on items at one time, because then we wonder, how much time did they speak? How much time do they have left? And I don't think the clerk can keep track of, of that when the speaker gets up and sits down. If they're going to have 10 minutes for more than three items, that'll require us...
I'm not sure if that's a problem, because if they've got five items, they're going to speak on the first item for three minutes?
No, if, no, we weren't going to run a clock per item if there's more than five. It's cumulative 10, and they can decide how to use that time.
Okay, so you're just going to let them do it?
Okay.
So, so I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, that when they come up and they've got 10 items, have them to specifically say that they're going to speak on this item first.
As I understand it, what they do elsewhere, and correct me if I'm wrong, certainly, that we don't tell them that. We tell them, you got 10 minutes to talk.
So, they can talk about whatever.
Theoretically, but how much, you know?
Yeah.
But all they can do is 10 minutes. Is that correct, City Attorney? I mean, I know it's why we, whatever we say, but that's what we...
Right, instead of having the individual coming up and going.
Yeah, and trying to track them or anything.
If they have more than three items, and they are going to be entitled to a 10-minute cumulative time, they would stand there for 10 minutes maximum, and discuss all items on the consent agenda they want to address, whether they want to spend 30 seconds on some items, a minute on another, that's their choice. But they would have cumulative 10 minutes, and then they would be finished with speaking on consent agenda.
So, we don't have to track the items? So, what we have to do is watch the clock.
Right, okay. The, the other thing that was brought up was decorum. And I, I actually got irritated at the last meeting, because we have endured a lot of conversation from one specific person who basically just calls us names and, you know, says all kind of manner of things, and to me, that is not proper decorum for a city council meeting. So, when you say you're going to put that in there, I just want to make sure we got some kind of meat when he starts, he or she starts saying some things that is not...
No, it, it is, when it's irrelevant, I intend to deal with it, and certainly, if any of the council wants to call a point of order, that's even better.
Okay.
And you can do that at any point in time, and I will make a judgment on it, but I'm not going to be lenient with it.
And the last thing is, when certain, or the public comes up and you have to stop them, the next request is, could you restart my time? I personally would like for it to just go on.
I don't, procedures on that, or what?
Mayor's Chairman, you'll run the meeting. The only suggestion I would have is, if we need to explain some rules, you certainly can control the time. If an individual is being irrelevant, you could ask the clerk to stop while you explain to the individual they're being irrelevant, and if that happens again, you're, they're going to be asked to sit down. You could then restore the time and just, and you control that.
Which is what we did at the end of last meeting.
You could certainly do that. You control the meeting.
Yeah, well, that's what I did at the end of last meeting. I said, stop the time, clerk, stop the time.
Right, you know...
Get the thing out of the way, and said, okay.
If you feel appropriate, so you can explain.
Relevant?
Yes, sir.
Leave.
And again, the procedures we're talking about only apply to the consent agenda.
Yes.
We'll still have the ability to put cards on just quasi judicial, public hearing items, other propositions before council at the three minutes, but as consent agenda is more of your business, non-discussion, non-controversial type of items, that's why that one is being treated.
But the rules on relevancy are on all of those things.
Relevance, yes, sir.
And that should take care of a lot of the problems.
You still will require speakers to be relevant and to exercise proper decorum.
One more. Speaker gets up, has their 10 minutes, because certain speakers will sign up for five or six cards forever, because they want their 10 minutes. And let's say that speaker is not relevant, and you've given that speaker a warning, and then with only two minutes into their time, they are irrelevant for the second time, we sit them down and they're done, for all their items. Because then I can see a speaker coming back and saying, well, I get to come back up for my other item, and so I'm just playing devil's advocate, realizing that, you know, you know, so he goes a minute, he or she goes a minute and a half, and is irrelevant. You call him irrelevant, the second, 20 seconds later, you call him out again, you've got to sit down. Now they've got eight minutes left, and only talked on one item.
Good point.
I think by putting in the rules, which is, the first time you're irrelevant, you'll be asked to be, you'll be warned, you'll be asked to be relevant. Second time, the rule is, you will be asked to sit down. As far as I'm concerned, I don't care if you have nine minutes and 30 seconds left, too bad, you've blown it, you know better.
Well, that's, I, I don't disagree with you from our point of view, but we have to make sure it's, it's legal to do that. Are we stopping him from his rights, or hers, whoever? City Attorney, do you want to talk to that issue?
I agree. If your policies, of course, require relevancy, and if you've asked the speaker to be relevant to the consent agenda, and that speaker chooses not to be relevant after being asked by you to be relevant, in my opinion, that is to the consent agenda. So, if this council's decided that they've interrupted the meeting, that they've been irrelevant, and you've asked them to sit down, that would be asked to the consent agenda.
Okay, it does. And again, I would welcome anybody to, if they think it's time to call a point of order, and we'll vote on it, and take care of it.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Member Stokel, anything?
No, I just was going to say the same, kind of the same direction you guys are going with. If it's not relevant to the discussion, I think they need a warning, and if not, if they continue down, that they should be asked to sit, I think it should be clear. And I agree with the point of orders. I think that they need to be utilized more so to keep people on track and to make us be able to run our meetings efficiently.
I think we all agree. Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, do we have a motion? I can't remember.
I don't make the...
Okay, anybody like to make a motion?
What it's supposed to be?
We need a motion.
Motion, Deputy Preparator Ordinance on Speaking Proceeds.
Just consistent with your discussion here tonight, and to bring that back for a first reading at your next meeting.
And if there's anything missed or anything, we can deal with it.
Absolutely, yes. That's my motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like, like sign? Sorry, I didn't wait quite long enough.